Comes and picks up my card and then he starts putting the camera.
Oh, no.
Oh, it's Kita?
Don't change anything.
He's trying to change because the chapter.
But there's no sign.
And he does, he wants to clear it all up.
To spend one every time.
Oh, okay.
The difference doesn't make the tape.
Sorry.
Thing is clear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just need an initial.
Um, sign and date, initial and date, something that shows what you saw.
Showing how impressed everyone has someone speaks or anything and see how loud it is.
Oh, really? Does it show from a real?
No, no. No, but you took it out from automatic.
Miles.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
This thing is all complete.
Which one is that?
So that, okay.
Okay. I'll put it on that big stamp in the address.
It's growing, huh?
Yeah. Money?
No.
Try again. One. Almost there. See that silver? See this?
Yeah.
Push it. Instead of keep asking me.
We have other questions here. I want to just add one. I had started a couple of these and then there was a question that we continued to change. I'm trying to remember how long ago that was. What page are we on? Um, fifty-three in my book. I think it's eight three, eight, uh, eight one three.
Yep.
Eight one three, eight nine ten.
This is perfect.
We can say that, we don't have to say those.
There's a reason why I'm trying to remember the conversation on these ones that I asked for this. This, 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 and this.
This, I don't think we have to say, um, what we can say. So, so I would say browse this.
Yeah.
Because I came up with this based on this, which is not to say I'm right or I, you know, didn't miss anything.
We're looking at a minimum and a maximum.
Well, not that we have to have a minimum and a maximum, but we can't say.
It can't be under seven fifty, but we can cap it at seven ten.
We kept the memos, huh?
Okay, now, now.
The maximum was five.
Must be minimum seven fifty.
Right.
Present or sticky?
Okay, yes, it's still separate.
Yeah.
Correct? Thank you.
And is the door first coming or is it after?
The fire department get two deliveries of, I guess it's two of.
They go on automatic delivery, so sometimes it is weekly in the winter. Yeah.
Did you, um, did you get this one?
I, yes, everybody has it.
This stuff on this, so.
Is next, yeah, or don't worry about it. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Put that on.
It's chilly, turn me down, it's chilly.
Okay, let's open up the planning board meeting of December fourth with continu- continuance of Mr. Gagnon's subdivision plan. Mr. Berry.
Good evening, Chris Berry with Berry's Surveying Engineering. It's been a long week, it's already Tuesday, so I apologize, I'm not as professionally dressed as I normally am. Uh, I'll roll one full size on and then have some hash. So, um, just to refresh the board's minds, um, this is a re-subdivision, a subdivision that, um, took place about eighteen months ago on Club of No. Frankly, the need of the application is that we are reducing one of the units or one unit of the total subdivision. We're reducing the amount of roadway that's being installed and we're converting the project from a duplex style development to a single-family kind of a development. We met last, um, last meeting, which was about two weeks at this point. Um, and at that time, we had a planner's review done by your planner, John Krebs, and a civil engineer and our peer review done by Jay Stevens. Uh, since then, we've taken care of the comments that were provided to us at that time and we were able to take care of a few discussion items that took place at this table as part of that public hearing. Really, the bulk of the conversation that came out of last month's meeting revolved around a couple of John's comments as well as a couple of Jay's comments, John, Jay's comments in particular. And that was that we were proposing a well on unit five, LCA five, that went into the town's right-of-way, our proposed town's right-of-way. Uh, he took pretty good exception to that and so I agreed that I could redesign the site slightly to rectify that. Uh, I think he'll note in his, uh, final peer review for tonight, uh, that he takes no exception to the, to the plans that he provided and that we had satisfactorily taken care of all of the, uh, all of the engineering comments that he had provided us. Um, so as of now, there's no outstanding engineering concern. Um, Mr. Krebs, I apologize, maybe I should have reached out to John. What, for small technical items like this, I think we all know what it takes to prepare actual set of plans. And so with Jay, everything, Jay requested everything in PDF, I supplied everything to John in PDF also. Um, apparently John was expecting a full set of plans. So you'll notice that John's technical review today is actually just a recap of last month's review. I had provided him a, a digital copy of the plans and a written formal response. Um, and so what I'd like to do with the board is just take his, what he's calling conditions of approval, um, go through my responses and then we can sort of mutually check off what applies to be a conditional approval and what might not apply if, if the board's okay with it. Um, so, um, other than that, I think the, uh, the plans are in order for a finalization. Unless the board has any other questions or you feel there's other outstanding items that we weren't able to address with your, uh, with your consultants.
I, I just want to clarify, with Jay Stevens' review, um, it's talking about the well radius.
Yes.
You're talking about the well radius going into the town right-of-way. This references lot four.
Yeah.
So, so is there, is it still extending into the?
No.
Yeah.
No, so because these aren't actual lots, and this is a load confusion. And these are limited common areas. Uh, let's see, where's the things that show that? So, uh, let's see, four is here. And so Jay's comment is that in a normal subdivision where there are lots, the subdivision regulations do not allow for well radiuses without abisment to go onto other lots, and that's pursuant to state statute also. In this particular instance, because these are limited common areas, um, the state allows what we're proposing to do. My comment in, in his, to his original comment was that you can't take a well like this and hang it onto somebody else's property because you're infringing on their rights. And so that's, I guess that's the only difference between what Jay talks about and what I talked about. But now all of the well radiuses stay on our property or on our open space and are not inside the road.
Okay. That was to Jay Stevens' comment, and then we're gonna go into, um, John's technical memorandum.
Did, um, I emailed, I had CC's, um, D O one or both of you, on my responses to John. Did, um, did, will get them right now?
I don't believe so. I don't recall it, if you wouldn't mind taking the time anyway.
Yeah, no, no problem.
We'll get them into the record and I'll be on the same page.
So I've got, um, a couple copies, I might not have. Okay, good. There you go, sir. Actually, I have an extra. So, um, John's initial comment was that, um, the, uh, let's see here. Oops, my dog, that struck. I'm sorry. Um, so John's initial, uh, comment was that the title of the plan should really not reference the original parcel. I disagreed with him, but it wasn't worth arguing about, so all I did was I add, added all of the lots that are affected by this re-subdivision instead of just listing the original parcel. Um, so, uh, it appears, it doesn't show up here again, so maybe he felt that was satisfactory. Um, so I changed both the title of the plan, um, and also the, um, button and narrative items and things like that that are affected by them. Let's see, applicant should clarify if the trees are existing or proposed. Um, those, the symbols on the plans are for proposed trees and we've provided a legend on the overview plan, on what I call the native plan. Uh, that indicates that those are proposed, which goes to his next comment, uh, or one of his next comments in that the trees should show up in the legend, which they do now. I'm not sure what comment that is, but when I get to it, I should be able to read it. Um, so, uh, John's first, you know what I'm realizing? His latest memorandum isn't in line with his original memorandum. They're the same discussion points, but they're in different orders for some reason.
That's okay. Just pick one and go with it and follow.
Why don't we start, I'm sorry to do this, but why don't we start with his latest memorandum and we'll just go through that part quickly.
Okay.
So the board, uh, says the board should, uh, consider requiring grant, grading drainage easements on lots one and two, uh, to be part of the right-of-way. And I feel that we've satisfactorily taken care of that because I extended the right-of-way out, uh, as we had discussed at the last meeting. So if the board will recognize on the plans, there's this odd jog, for lack of a better term, in the right-of-way here and there's an odd John in the right-of-way here, and that's to satisfy John's grading comment. We do have, uh, two remaining easements because I wasn't gonna take the road right-of-way and go all the way around that, that doesn't seem prudent. Um, but we still have one grading and drainage easement, but the grading that's around the roadway is now gonna be all within the right-of-way and additional drainage items are covered by an easement. So, uh, I guess I'm submitting to the board that, uh, John's technical memorandum, uh, one for tonight, is addressed. Um, the applicant should clarify that the trees are existing or proposed, I discussed that, uh, they're proposed and they show up in the legend as proposed. Uh, the applicant has labeled, uh, the road right-of-way, we, we labeled the road right-of-way with a tax method lot number and that has to do with, uh, for two reasons. One, we like to show the area of that because at some point somebody's gonna have to write a deed into the town and that area should be listed in that deed. Additionally, by listing that area, one could add up all of these areas and make sure that it's the same area that I'm showing as part of the total lot area. And then two, his point is that I've given it a tax method lot number and that has to do with assessment so that, um, until such time as the road is transferred, that area can actually be assessed, uh, to the association. Uh, we had discussed that with your assessing department during prior application and I think they felt that was acceptable to do. It's not done in many towns for some reason and then you have this hanging piece of property that's unassessable um, and then the lot area is not listed, so when it's transferred, people really don't know what size it is, which is in my mind inappropriate. I'm a three-year-old, so I get all the fun things from school. Numbers four, five, and six, those would remain as conditions because all, uh, four and five, four A and five, they should remain as conditions of approval because, um, until a plan is finalized and certified, it should always have stamps and signatures on it, so we would supply that as part of the final package. Number six, the applicant should meet with the assessor to ensure that our designations of lot numbers is appropriate. I'm happy to do that as part of a condition of approval. Certificate of, uh, orientation, the board should require that the applicant provide a certificate of guarantee, guaranteeing placement of the margins. I'm happy to do that as part of the condition of approval, um, except that, um, we, um, standard basis, don't set the road, uh, points until after road construction because they're just gonna get wiped out. Um, and so in that instance, what we do is you also require a bond for the roadway, um, prior to any, um, building permits, so we would bond that as part of the construction payment, but we would be happy to set the rest of them for you. So that would be a, uh, condition of approval also. Um, number eight, the board and the applicant should discuss combining the driveways. Uh, we discussed that last meeting and we combined the driveways, so that, uh, has been taken care of. Sheet number five and others, the applicant has provided a painting for a white stripe bar. Um, we discussed removing it, we removed it from the plan, so it's, uh, not an issue. The detail that showed the natural gas, um, has been removed from the plan set. Uh, note number, sheet number sixteen, the trees and shrub schedule should be added to the plans. Um, again, the tree and shrub schedule is added to the, uh, master legend within the plans, so I don't, I think that's.
So it's added to the legend, but is there a schedule, for example, before the roadway is fully constructed? You know, the, the tree line, you know, between the butter will be planted or, you know, some kind of timeframe relative to construction?
Oh, that use of the word schedule.
Yeah.
There is not.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to add one.
All right.
Yeah. When somebody says a planting schedule to me, that is a schedule of the plants to.
That is a, that is a fair use of the word.
But not, ah. Um, so, yes, I'd be happy to add that. Um, is it fair to say prior to the first certificate of occupancy, that is that acceptable, acceptable to the board?
I'm gonna think that our butter is probably gonna want trees prior to.
That's kind of where I'm feeling. You know, after completion of the road, whether it be as limited disruption to the sides where the planting would go on, I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to have plantings before you begin road fi- you know, underlayment or, or top coat, you know, maybe not finished surface paving, but.
Is there a fence there now? The, the butter, on the, most of the roadway?
There's a proposed fence.
Okay, yeah. Any idea, Lee, is that gonna go in? In conjunction with the planting?
Yeah, typically you do them at the same time because they're so close to the road. So the entrance to this roadway has actually been started. So, um, they're built to about, about here, about four or five, I suppose, there. So, um, I'm not sure if it's paved or not, I don't believe in.
It's not paved, but I see the fence machinery on it.
Yeah, I do.
But I'm just thinking if you're talking about going for the first C of O, that means there's already all the construction traffic that's gonna be happening that the neighbors would have to tolerate, um, as opposed to once the road's in, if the trees went in, it would be that much more of a sound buffer and visual buffer for the other residents, um, while, while construction goes on.
So there is still, um, a, a tree line that's there now. We didn't, we didn't clear trees right to the, the real. So the only complication that I see as far as prior to any building permit is that, um, if the weather breaks and also that they can get this paved this fall, then they would be looking for building permit. But the, it's a really, you know, this isn't the time of year that you would plant these types of plants, so. That's, but we wanna ensure that that takes place and so that's why I'm saying prior to the first certificate of.
You could separate the plantings from the fence though and install a fence and save plantings for spring.
You could, you could do that, yeah.
I think that would be.
I think that would be appreciated.
Yeah.
So, uh, we would say, um, the fence, either prior to or as part of the building permit process and then with the, uh, plants as part of the certificate of occupancy.
Do you have any comments, John?
No.
Okay.
I, I like that. It finished all, you know, Gagnon as well as butters.
Um, and so prior to CO or it would need to be bonded for as part of the infrastructure that's been finished?
Are you talking about the fence?
No.
What, I'm sorry, go back.
Because the fence, the fence, basically you're saying you want that installed as prior to getting building permit.
As part of that building permit process, I think, you know, before construction really starts on the walling, yes.
So what I'm saying is, um, you would want as either part of the CO or to make sure that the vegetation does get built, that it's bonded for as part of the rest of the infrastructure that's not built.
When you say bonded for, you're talking about the road?
Right, but the trees are really.
Part of that same.
Part of that infrastructure, so, so if, if, um, let's just say this cul-de-sac isn't built. So we would bond the remainder of what's not built, so we come up with a value, call it a hundred thousand dollars. Gravel, pavement, drainage. And then we would say, okay, so we have that, but you have this also that's unfinished and that's worth ten thousand dollars. So your vegetation is part, your construction bond.
And so you're saying to potentially hold up the CO for that bond, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, you, you couldn't issue a CO without bonding the unfinished infrastructure.
Yes.
Right. The state law says build or bond, one of the two. So, I mean, maybe that's enough to just say.
Well, that's got some work going on on the road, is there, at this point in time, is it just a plan to, to pave a certain portion of the road? Or, or to finish a certain portion of the road?
Well.
I'm assuming it'd all be done when they, when they have the paving crew come, they, they wanna do the whole paving job, they want.
They'd like to, they'd like to, but they'd also.
The binding code, yeah.
They would also like to start construction on this house. And so it's all gonna be weather dependent, we're running out of time really fast this year. So if, right now they're to gravel surface, they, if there's a paving company available, they're gonna have somebody come in and pave just for five hundred feet to base course. If the weather breaks and we have a nice weather like we've had this week, they'll likely come in and finish the cul-de-sac and pave it all at once. But we don't know that and so in that instance that it's not finished, that's why we post a bond. So there's financial security there, that it will be finished.
Okay.
So planting is part of the CO or bonded for?
Continue, if you would.
Okay.
No, go, so go, I, I'll jump there for you. Approval from the fire chief and the police chief.
Okay, if the board wants that as part of a conditional approval, I'm okay with that loosely, but we already had their approval on the first.
The road, right, so, so.
And this hasn't changed, so I'm not, my initial response was, hey, I, I'm sorry to be so flip, but John, why are you bringing this up? I mean, it's the same.
I, I'm curious about that too and I wanna hear from the other board members because I agree with you, the road is built, but if there's, you know, so the roadway's shorter, you know, you did change the road in that the cul-de-sac, you know, the whole, you know, you didn't change the dimensions of the cul-de-sac, so, you know, but since he's mentioning it and he's our hired professional, I wanna honor that with at least a discussion.
Well, the, in the preliminary plans that went through, um, you had feedback from the police and the fire at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
They weren't preliminary, they were.
They were full.
They were approved, yeah.
So, is there any changes specifically to, anything to change in the road that these, this equipment would come down that has changed?
No, in fact, it's shorter and that section.
But no, no width has changed?
Zero, I mean, I was very sure.
No, none of the construction standards have changed?
Not, not one bit, right.
So it's basically the same road, regardless of what's happening around the road in cul-de-sac, it's the same road in cul-de-sac that they previously viewed and accepted?
Yes. We took this cul-de-sac and it was here and we went like this and that's it.
It did, it, it did have a kick to it, you pulled it back, made it shorter and you changed some of the angle.
I mean, in fact, in fact, we took, there was a bend in it.
And it came back up?
Yeah, and it came back up, I mean, we took, kinda took that out of it.
My position is it's made it easy, from what they've already viewed and accepted in prior plan, this is a, an easier plan, you know, way for them to navigate. But that's just, that's just one point of opinion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I, I don't, I don't think this is substantial enough change that we would need to go with the approval.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah. So final approval from the town chair, I think we have that. Just making scratch a half list. And DES final approval. I'm gonna be honest, I'm not sure that this actually needs subdivision approval, so I'll ask the question and make sure we forward the correspondence to YouTube. Um, so you, you can leave that as a condition of approval now and then if it's deemed unnecessary by DES, I'll forward that correspondence.
Copy John, if you would.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And then I'm not sure what fees need to be paid, we'd be happy to pay them. Uh, Jay hasn't sent me a bill, so that might be what you can sash about.
Unless there's anything else, we have to check, so we're gonna, you know.
It's a subdivision, so you don't need to report the plans?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, you do.
You can say the recording case.
So he's up to date on all his review thing, correct?
The rest, yes.
Okay, so there's a fifty dollar check to the town plus a blank check to the registry, um, for.
Did you record?
Recording, no, we record now.
Okay. That's new.
That's new. That's new.
Is there a specific reason that that's new?
We were finding some people would take approved plans and not record them.
That they don't have a valid project?
Well, right, nonetheless, you know, nonetheless, it creates problems. So, this way, um, we know they're getting recorded because we're doing it.
Okay, and their recorded timeline?
Absolutely, same week, yes.
Great.
So, other than that, um.
Board, are there any concerns, questions?
I don't know.
How are you?
Good.
Are you doing okay with this? Do you wanna, do you wanna minute, I don't wanna rush you.
I have a question. So, we talked about planting being a contingency of the C O or bonded. What was the word?
Or bonded.
Or bonded.
With the roadway, the roadway's gonna be bonded and that will be.
Or bonded by roadway?
Where needs to be built, needs to be bonded.
Built or bonded, okay. As a condition of C O.
Okay.
As a construct, as a condition of building permit was the fence.
Okay.
So, not to belabor the point, the plantings will go on the, I'll call the inside of the fence? So, not both sides of the fence?
Right.
Okay.
I do just wanna point out, the butters aren't here. We've done a lot of work for sixteen months to make sure that they are as happy as possible.
We do appreciate that.
Yes, we do, absolutely.
We do appreciate that.
Okay, so with that, I'll reopen the public hearing in case any public wanna comment on, okay. Closing the public hearing, thank you anyway, okay.
I'd like to hear another list of like the conditional, conditional.
Do you want to, let's have a list from Sarah so we make sure we got them.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, request.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, 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 let me just try to put them together here. So, it would be stand final plans, um, by Ken, Kenneth? Isn't your name Chris?
Yeah, that's my mom.
Okay. And by sending, uh, meet with the assessor. Certificate of Monumentation with the conditions that, uh, we bond the road and set the rest of the monuments. So, you're not gonna monument the road.
Until when, can you clarify that?
The road. Once the road's built, set the monuments.
Okay, so that would be like a condition of take, a condition of taking over the road, then? Like, I just, you know, I wanna, I, you know, timeline or.
So, well, here's the, I'll lay the timeline before you. My applicant at some point is gonna have to write you a check and he's gonna want his money back. And so, that's, that's the reason people finish projects now. And he can't have his money back until all the pounds are set and the grass is green outside of the road and.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, continue, thank you.
So, it's. Are we at, oh, the condition of the. So, the building of the fence is it as a condition of the issuance of the building permit and the planting of proposed trees and shrubs as a condition of certificate of occupancy or built or bonded road?
Or, or bonded.
Built road or bonded?
So, so the, the plantings will happen as a condition of occupancy or else they will be bonded, because the road and the plantings go together. The road and plantings will be completed or bonded for as a condition of occupancy permit.
So, most C O will be issued unless the rules in place, unless the town's presented with a bond referencing covering that work.
Right, but add plantings to road.
Add plantings to road. Yeah, they're all one, they're one, they're really one.
Okay.
And you said you added the tree and shrub planting schedule? Or you, you added the legend? Okay.
You added the legend, but I think the schedule and my definition of schedule's been addressed with that.
Well, it's been satisfied.
It's been satisfied, so we're good.
Okay. So, uh, cost estimates for road and all improvements, landscaping?
Yeah, so what we do is we, we prepare estimate, we submit to Jay for his review and approval.
And act and make it prove.
So, that's a, that's a condition, um, and then, do you wanna add as a condition, um, state subdivision approval or?
Some kind of documentation from the state that it is either satisfied or not required?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
It would be, get an email from, is it Rob Target for Don Bueker?
Okay, and then I'm gonna also include payment of all these just, because now the.
We gotta make sure Jay gets paid.
Jay gets paid and now the.
We have money. Recording, yes, yes.
Uh, so they're maybe, it's like.
They will pass fire and fully.
Yeah, we're gonna make it, yeah.
That's right.
Motion, anyone?
Make a motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
The motion to approve the plans as presented with the conditions as stated.
The eight conditions, yes.
The eight conditions as stated. Um, let us wait for our colleague to return for his voice.
Is mental services, there was, there was multi-families in here on the original plan?
Yes.
So, I can imagine changing to single families also was well received by the neighbors as well.
Yeah.
The project was not entirely well received, even though it was a, you know, a better, I mean, you know, some would say they're just upset about the project still. So, we relinked them, that. It has an approval already. So, John, we have a motion on the floor that's been submitted to approve the plans as presented with the eight conditions as discussed. Would you like to hear the conditions or?
I trust the board.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're good. Thank you, have a good meeting.
You, too. These are gonna go to trash, you don't believe them, right?
If you recycle them, that would be.
If you, if you wanna leave them, I will make sure they get recycled. You don't need to travel with recyclers. That's fine, that's fine. I'll take care of that, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
You, too. Okay, board. Um, I'm hoping that you all had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any comments or questions? People have a chance to review them?
I'm gonna free for me because I wasn't.
Yes, fair enough.
I, I did look at them, I didn't have any comments.
Okay, that considers well approved them then. Correspondence, I don't, we don't, we do not have any. Other business, we need to set the January date since the first Tuesday is, um, the first. So, um, I'm proposing that we meet on the eighth, if that works for people. We need to also consider that that would be a good time to hold public, a public hearing on all of our proposed zoning amendments. So, we can do that at the same time or we can hold a separate meeting as the board desires?
I'd be up for a little bit.
I think that's efficient.
Yep.
Okay, does the eighth work for everyone? Okay. Then the eighth, uh, seven, thank you, and we'll do the hearings at the same time, same time. I'm hoping you all had a chance to see John's, um, his drafts. Likewise, I sent, um, a write-up about accessory dwelling unit changes. So, if you all wanna take a moment to review them in case you haven't had a chance to, it would probably be a good idea to have language and such approved tonight so that we are uniform in what our planning on public hearing is, is about specifically when we get to that. I have a copy of the zoning ordinance, if anybody wants to consult it to see that it correlates.
Just missing the O of ordinance and the three.
Yeah. I would, I would, um, suggest that where it says board of selectmen, we change it to select board or they're designated just because they like to be called that now.
Yep.
If that's all right with everybody. Could you look at last month's meeting because I think I'm missing something? Because we've got three items here and I think there was a fourth.
We just talked about, uh, impact fee versus.
Oh, right, we're gonna take that. Yeah, so we'll get to that.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, while we are reviewing this, um, I got an email from, John forwarded to me the contact information for Bruce Mayberry who is happy to come evaluate our situation and discuss what may or may not have changed in Rollinsburg since two thousand and eleven and whether or not it is prudent to change our regulations such that, um, talk about impact fees, whether or not it makes sense and so forth. There's a fee for that.
Was it some time ago that we had someone, is it, is it the same individual that?
Yes, he, he.
Talked about it in the, the ongoing administrative concerns and.
I wasn't there at that time, but that is my understanding that it was the same.
It was the same firm, same company?
Same gentleman.
What's the fee?
He charges a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. He estimates it to be approximately five hundred dollars to come out and spend an hour and a half or two hours with us. So, it's.
I, I, I don't, I don't think that. I mean, we've had a discussion about the past and the, of, of impact fees and granted, we're not a town that's bustling with development, but there are things that are popping up, we see. Do we feel we have to, we have to get on board with impact fees?
Not at all. So, the thing about impact fees, to my mind, there are two things to consider with impact fees. One is that there's an administrative, um, labor aspect to that which, you know, we may or may not be able to deal with in the future depending on, you know, how things progress for budget and so forth. The other is, you have to prove that these developments are causing an impact for which there is a cost.
Absolutely, yeah.
And right now, our school is not at capacity. So, there's room there. So, not to say that there is enough room for a two-hundred-house development. So, at what point do we wanna get concerned? Because a two-hundred-house development might, you know, bring it to the, bring it to worthwhile. It's not as though a two-hundred-home development is out of the range of possibilities with the sizes of the parcels that could go up for sale at some point. So, you know, it's all about the way things are going now, I would say we're fine. We just don't know when that's gonna happen.
No, and you're, you're right, you have to be able to justify charging these fees. You have to show exactly where the money's going in, that there is a need that has been created because of the additional burden of, of the population.
As it stands right now, to charge a certain amount of money and then return it to people with interest, you know, is, is an administrative drain that doesn't seem worthwhile. But, but there might be a point at which.
And there might be, yes, and, and we might get caught with our pants down, for lack of a better term, if, if one of these big parcels that can be subdivided comes up for sale and sells and is purchased by a developer. Do we wanna get ahead of it, I guess, is the question.
Well, I guess my question is, is there a way to get ahead of it without overburdening ourselves unnecessarily?
Is there someone from Stratford Regional Planning that could also?
That's an alternative.
Less.
That would be, that would be as costly, either.
The town has a membership with Stratford Regional and for that membership, we could kind of have them come out at least once a year and do a training on maybe one specific topic or else a general overs, you know, overview of topics, however we wanna structure it. But yes, we can have them do that. And, and that might be a good idea, too, because it's, it's an agency with a different perspective than somebody we've already heard from.
But I, even at this point, I don't feel myself as being educated enough in how they all work to really make a decision on should we go out.
I'm with you on that.
I'd like to know more about it, you know, through someone who knows about it, with, with no bias in any direction. That's, that's where I sit.
No, I completely agree with that.
So, are we on board with the idea of scrapping a change in impact fees for this voting cycle? For this election cycle and then?
I don't think we're in any way prepared.
We wouldn't have time, I think, to, to have some, you know.
Okay.
Talking, given that this is December.
Okay, so would you like me to reach out to Stratford Regional and inquire about getting them out there for some kind of training? And so, is impact fees what we wanna focus on or do we wanna?
I think it's something we've touched on a few different times and I think we need to, I think we need to address it and decide whether or not to go for it or whether or not not.
Can, can it, so, so we've talked about growth ordinance, impact fees, like, route that.
We could, we could, we could maybe package that, I think that's a great idea. Okay, does that sound workable?
Therefore, I think they have some free time, too.
The growth ordinance was the other one, that, that's what I was thinking. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna scrap the idea of a growth ordinance or a growth, um, aspect to our zoning ordinance and tie it all together with impact fees as training first, we'll revisit it next year. Does that sound like a plan? So, we're down to three proposed zoning ordinances as per John's sheet that he provided. Getting our accessory dwelling unit language congruent with state law. The special exception about, um, six or more units in a, in a building and adding or designate to the select board. Does anybody have any comments about John's language for number two, the special exception? Let's do this one at a time. Is there any discussion or question about?
But this, this is a single change, it's changing it from the current wording here to this new wording.
Right, to all that language, which has implications. You know, he's adding an intent to some degree, what, you know, with that language. With that language.
Right, I mean, and the one that comes to my mind is the year two thousand nineteen, because that's. You know, when I think of the old mill, you know, the Blue Mill, I mean, that was certainly predated in two thousand nineteen, but. I mean, that just, that just means that, you know, someone built a four-unit last year and they want to chop it up even smaller, make it a six-unit now. Or more.
They were about to make it a space required.
Yeah, they would have to be spaced, but I, I see this more as something pertaining to some of the, I'm not gonna say original, but some of the. Older buildings, I guess you really can't do that.
Well, I'm wondering if that whole sentence is even pertinent, because I don't think it. I don't think there are any buildings in town for which that would apply, with the exception of. The mill, I suppose, is why he's allowing that to be there, because you have to allow. The mill, that potential, since it's zoned, that they make use of now.
Is, is now, yes.
But to my mind, those are the only buildings for which this can speak to, because any other building is probably maxed out at capacity.
Within its safe, within its footprint, yes, unless they stayed in the footprint, which, which opens it up to other scrutiny.
Right.
Well, then that's safe, in that case, it's just a safe to me two thousand nineteen, because it really doesn't matter, because there only be that limited amount of buildings that are really qualified to this, that have the, the mass and, you know, the space. Yeah, I'm okay with that, I just, yeah, that beats my degree.
So, what is the real change here? So, existing says buildings containing multiple dwelling units shall contain no more than six.
Period.
Period.
Yeah.
And now we're saying new buildings. Contain no more than six, buildings that were constructed prior to two thousand nineteen should be allowed to be converted into multiple units with restrictions provided they.
Without restrictions, no, well, they've removed the restrictions, but it's still, it does mean everything else.
Yep.
As existing. So, that means you would already have the parking that is.
Yep.
Because you have to have two spaces per unit, I think, now as it is.
I'm not sure that that's even. The problem that needs to get addressed as far as, you know, the, the intent in changing the language is because when Lewin.
Sure.
Went through his process. He was allowed in one area of the zoning and then he met, he ran up against a wall with the other.
Not the wall, it was the density, wasn't it, because a six is six, period.
But I don't think the problem was with eight-one-two-ten, because, because there's nothing wrong with saying buildings containing multiple dwelling units shall contain no more than six dwelling unit. Units per building.
It does, because he has one and six in that building.
Yeah, that was his problem.
That was.
That was his problem, okay, so then we do have a problem with two thousand nineteen, because he remains. But maybe it has to remain that way, because he got approval prior, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about. Whether that language serves the interest with containing the D, and, and not to say that it doesn't.
What, my question would be, why is he, why is he separating new buildings from existing, why not just?
I, I, I have that same question with the D, it's the same thing.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be restricted based on size.
I agree, and I.
Yeah, but you, you kind of, by putting two nineteen, you sort of establish a, a grandfather effect before or after two thousand nineteen when your building was built.
Right, and that makes Lewin still non-compliant.
No, because the, the building itself was constructed before two thousand nineteen.
Right, so any building that's in town now.
He's just, he's just modifying it.
It, it's sort of a safety to someone coming out of something a little wild downstream that may turn into something even wilder.
Like making, making an apartment building, like a new apartment.
Right. Right, something that's fits now, but.
Yeah, and he's saying that, okay, with the parking spaces, okay.
Because that's a mixed-use building, with a commercial dimension. I think he's safely wrote it now that he thought, okay, two thousand and eighteen, only because of, what exists now limits it in itself.
Thoughts?
I think I agree.
Okay, so we're good with that. Any comments on number three, changing select, Board of Selectmen to Select Board or their designee? That's pretty straightforward. And then skipping back up to going out of order here to number one, I provide that on a separate sheet, it, it's referenced in a few different places. This printout from the Municipal Association offers guidance on. Why I. Proposed the changes that I proposed, do you have another? Yeah, it's over there, if you want to, no, not that, the.
What, you picked up?
Yeah, I think it's, it's in there, yeah, thank you. Just see if we can see what we're. Looking at, so I'm putting in bold. My recommendation, so. Under the table of uses, which is six point nine. A, under table of uses is residential, and the first item under residential is accessory dwelling unit, so under that table. I believe we need to add a P, saying that it is permitted in the industrial district, because we allow for single-family dwellings in the industrial district. You must allow ADUs in the same districts that you allow single-family dwellings.
Because an E is an exception on that chart, right, so a P would be permitted.
E is special.
Special exception, that's not the case anymore, because of the way the state changed, so now we would have to have a P, correct?
We have to have a P, I believe, yes. Okay, so, under eight-one, multiple dwellings, two-family dwellings, accessory dwellings, and renting of rooms, number three under that is accessory dwelling units. The reference, it references. The table seven, which is the residential permitted uses, and it's really six point nine, as I noted above, not seven, so we need to change the reference there in the text. To six point nine rather than seven, under that, number four, I believe we should delete, it limits the number of bedrooms to one, we are not allowed to limit the number of bedrooms. So, I think we ought to just delete that number altogether and renumber.
But we have the safety of the square footage required.
Exactly.
So, that sort of, that sort of limits on, in its own.
In and of itself, right.
In and of itself, yes.
Yes, okay, and then number twelve, under that same section, maximum size is currently five hundred square feet in our regs. We must allow a minimum of seven hundred and fifty square feet, so we could change the maximum size to seven hundred and, seven hundred and fifty square feet. So, it becomes the maximum and the minimum at the same time. Which is bizarre, and I, you know.
Have to be seven hundred and fifty square feet?
That is the minimum, so we can allow for larger than that, but given that our.
But we can set our maximum.
We can set our maximum, we have.
They set our minimum.
We have to allow that minimum.
Right, so we kind of cap it, basically it has to be seven fifty, because that's the state minimum in Rollinsburg maximum, so you, you're capped.
If you're gonna have it, it will be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
But what if that's?
I'm, I'm not even sure what to say if the best.
But the building itself mean on, allow that certain square footage without.
If you leave a forward, don't set the alarm.
Okay, very good.
And I'll, I'll do the same.
Thank you, sir.
Right, right, by pigeonholing it to that exact dimension.
That's really specific.
Just because of.
And it's, yes, and that will be talked about.
What if it's seven fifty-two?
That's what I mean, I mean, you could say seven fifty to, to eight fifty, just to give them all of a wiggle room, but.
Something.
You would have, you know, you would have to, you would have to frame this to be just seven fifty.
Well, and we have to allow a minimum of seven fifty, but I'm not sure, does that mean we cannot approve something that's proposed to be six hundred?
It's a state, it's a state minimum, I mean, I think that.
So.
The minimum is seven, if it's not seven fifty, it doesn't qualify. It is only minimum.
Do, do you see it in there?
It may not limit the ADUs to less than seven hundred and fifty square feet.
We may not limit it to less, but we could allow it to be less, so I think that allows us to have a maximum of seven fifty.
Okay.
And then somebody could propose and we could approve something less than that, but we cannot dictate that it will be less than that.
I think the maximum. Is a good idea, we don't want a two thousand square foot.
Eighty, right.
Right?
We may not limit the unit to less than seven hundred, we may not limit.
Right, so we're not limiting, we're not requiring, but we could allow.
We could allow, okay. So, they could build six hundred. We could allow it.
We just cannot impose. That minimum of less than seven hundred.
Must allow a minimum.
So, we can change the language.
They're saying we allow a minimum.
We can expand upon the language in number twelve to. You know, we will, we will allow. ADUs to be up to seven hundred and fifty square feet, some, you know, something to that effect.
Up to this is probably safe, do you want a minimum though, or?
I would say no, because we don't want to restrict people to having to build something seven hundred and fifty, we would want to allow somebody, I would think, to build something at five or six hundred if they want to.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, it services all of the requirements of an ADU. I mean, you have to have bating's silly, you have to have cooking, so, I mean, seven hundred is not so big.
No.
That's, that's an efficiency with that.
Right, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're saying it right here, a minimum is unnecessary, but maximum is a good idea, so if someone doesn't add five thousand square feet ADU, if it's not, it's very difficult.
Right.
Just make sure your maximum size is at least seven hundred and fifty, just to make sure, and we would, we would have, that that would be our maximum.
So, the current language says the size of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed five, uh, five hundred square feet, I would just say that we change five hundred to seven fifty.
Perfect.
Okay. And then under eighteen of that same section, it says accessory dwellings shall be allowed in a detached accessory structure that is in existence prior to the adoption of this ordinance, provide the following conditions are found to exist. Number, letter A, under that, the existing detached accessory structure consists of at least five hundred square feet of floor space, so again, I would just swap out five hundred for seven fifty.
Yeah.
Talking about existing structures rather than building a structure, but the same condition, the same allowance would change.
So, this is, this reads to me as though it's a minimum, the, the existing detached accessory structure consists of at least five hundred, and we would substitute five hundred for seven fifty? Am I reading that?
Just keeping in line with our attached.
So, you're right, okay, so the existing detached accessory structure consists of no more than, we'll, we'll change that to.
Well, no, because if you've got a structure that's seven hundred and fifty, how are you gonna chop an ADU out of it, it seems like that. Otherwise, you're turning this, let's say someone has a seven hundred and fifty square foot garage.
This is for detached.
That's what I'm saying, a detached garage.
So, so it is an interesting conundrum, because you've got an existing structure.
Because in other words, now you're turning this garage into just. Another unit, it's not really a.
You've got a two-hundred-square-foot mudroom with no, like, unfinished mudroom, you know.
Right, you're gonna say, I would think that the detached structure has to be big enough to support the ADU as well as the structure itself, the use, the original use of the structure, otherwise you're changing the use of the building.
So, so do we say, you know, at least five hundred, but no more than seven hundred and fifty square feet and give them a range?
But I'm talking about, if, if you're gonna have the, the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
Inside of another structure, let's say a garage, just because it's easier. You got, I would think you don't have at least a fifteen-hundred-square-foot garage, so you can still have a garage and put an ADU above it, because otherwise, if it's eight hundred, you've really changed the use of that structure, it's.
Entirely, yes, but I think that's the intent, I think that's the intent, that you no longer have a, a garage, or you don't necessarily still have a garage.
But.
You just have an ADU.
So, how are you proposing the wording to be, that the, that this detached structure? Can only get back, because now you're forcing them to change it from a garage, if you say the maximum square footage of that structure is seven fifty. Now, you're forcing them to change the use of that building, because there's not very enough room left for garage.
Well, okay, so the existing detached accessory structure consists of at least five hundred square feet of floor pla, of floor space, that is not speaking to how much of it would be an ADU, that's the. Accessory structure itself. So, so. How big do we want a structure itself to be before we say that we're gonna max you out at seven hundred and fifty square feet? Because we cannot prescribe a minimum less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, even though it's detached.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking of. I don't know their name, but the barn on Sligo and Bear, where he put a mother lard inside the barn, you know, the barn's great, is, is a large structure and there's still ample square footage left over, but he did tuck in the. ADU.
So, do we want to say anything at all about how big the structure is?
I don't think you can, I don't think you can.
So, he could, he could conceivably convert the entire barn into a.
Well, we're maxing you out at seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Uh, for the, for the accessory unit.
But that may be your whole structure.
Yep.
But it doesn't have to be your whole structure, you still can have a functional structure.
I don't, I don't think we care what.
I don't think we, we can care, granted, it has to be seven hundred and fifty to support the ADU.
Right.
But if you want to have a garage, that you have upstairs and you want to put an ADU up there and still have your garage.
So, I, so.
I don't think we can cap the existing structure's space, as long as the existing structure, whether, whether the, the ADU takes up every bed of that square footage or a quarter of the structure.
Is A necessary at all? Is this, is that, is that sentence necessary at all, would it be better to scratch?
So, this, this is saying, I, I think I understand it better now, that the building, your detached building has to be at least five hundred square feet before you can attempt to put a ADU in it, at least five hundred square feet.
And I'm saying.
Which is not unreasonable, it's still.
So, if you have a shed. That's two hundred square feet, you're not gonna convert that to an accessory as well.
No, no, because you, in, in, the flip side is you change, you, you no longer have the shed, now you.
Right.
Yep. You've changed the use of that building altogether.
Right.
But are we gonna require that they still have a shed or a garage or a barn, or can it all be for this purpose?
I, I don't have that answer for you. Because I have a garage that has space up above that I could certainly put that in and still have full use of my garage, but my neighbor has a very tiny garage and seven hundred and fifty might be his whole garage.
But if you don't want a garage, then do we want to dictate to you that if you're gonna?
I don't, I don't think you can dictate, you know, what my building has to or can't be, as long as I can fit the seven fifty in there, the rest of it's still my building to, to use as I wish. So, we, so I don't think we can put a limit on.
Why do you think they use the term floor space? You know, they don't, in, in the prior, I mean, I almost think floor space means, you know, living area for the ADU.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I think there's a reason why there's differentiation between the, the phrase.
Floor space and what, you know, what's the alternative if it's not?
Five hundred square feet of floor space.
As opposed to?
And the other one doesn't say anything at all, the prior one, the, the.
It doesn't say floor space, huh? I see it here on eighteen.
I don't think there's any other reference.
No, because in more basic, you're putting it inside of a, a, a home anyways, a house anyways, this is only for a detached, so it would have to be an outbuilding. Because if it's attached, it's part of your main structure, it's part of your main house.
But what I'm saying, Kim, is what? Why are they adding up floor space, why would they just stop at feet if it wasn't, I mean, I'm just thinking it means, you know, the livable area of the. ADU versus the, the rest of the structure?
Well, because you've got, you've got GLA gross living area in a house, but in a garage, you don't have any gross living area, it's just floor space, it's not, it's not heated, it's, it's not living space.
Right. Until you convert it.
So, you can't say square feet of living area, because it's not a living area unless you're transitioning it.
So.
You have a good point, if, that, that sticks out, why is that, therefore it's there than nowhere else, but because you're talking a, a detached dwelling, detached building. It can't. It can't be living space, because you'd have two different houses on one lot.
Potentially, yes, and so that's my question is, you know, ADUs according to our regulations have to be attached, so. I'm, do we even have to allow them in an accessory structure?
I, I, I think we run into problems if we try to take on that ability to put detached, although it does, I did read something in here about the detached.
So, the ADU must be attached. So, you consider detached ADU.
A municipality is not required to allow detached ADUs, for example, a unit that is above a detached garage or is a standalone building, if it does allow them, they are subject to other provisions of the law, except that an increased lot size may be required. So, we can make them change the minimum acreage to allow for that, but we do not have to allow eighteen if I. to allow for that, but we do not have to allow 18 at all.
So, so we, 18 currently exists, right?
Yes.
And it's, it leaves 500 feet of floor space.
18 pertains to the detached, yes.
Yes.
We're thinking that we would want to change it to be a maximum of, of 750 square.
Of ADU?
Well, we have to allow that as a minimum. Right now, we are allowing them with a minimum of 500. We could continue to allow and add the maximum of 750 and be done with it. Or we can get rid of A, or, you know, just be, I mean, we have allowed 18, 18's in there. We can get rid of 18, we don't have to have it. I'm not sure that.
I think we could strike A.
I think we can strike A.
But I don't, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to start seeing, you know, a bunch of sheds turned into, you know, living space. Uh, that's, that's.
Tiny houses.
Yeah, it has really a lot.
Tiny houses.
But is, did they create this law because of the tiny houses?
So. This predates tiny houses, I'm sure, this is probably older.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The houses and the tiny.
But it's conceivable that you could build a 300 square foot tiny house and, uh, next to a.
With no, just no lots.
Yeah, but now you're talking, now you're talking building and building. This isn't, this is different than a existing detached structure that you're looking at modifying.
Okay, existing.
Right, because if you want an ADU, it's attached to your house. This is an existing structure, so you're not gonna build a tiny house.
Existing detached structure, so I think we're safe there and, uh, a new permit for a tiny house is gonna have to go before select board. That's, that's a whole different, right?
Exactly, yeah.
That's a whole different thing, so. I think striking A, and that takes care of the concern of floor space, whether or not it's floor space. And it still has to fit everything else in the guidelines, which means the 750 that we talked about. Yeah, leaving B, because you, you don't want to change the footprint, you want to try to make, let the building remain the same. And, you know, that it's not a total revert, revamp of the building. C would be just, you know, minimal, minimal modifications to, uh, you know, sheet rock insulation, you know, wiring and plumbing.
Well, let us just note under 18, the final sentence, that those structures are exempt from eight, nine, and 13, which are not insignificant.
Well, and, and realistically, a point I brought up before is, it also really should be exempt from town number 10, because you can't have a, you know, a doorway between two buildings that are not.
Right, like, it's, it's, yes, exactly.
It's all we are.
By nature of being 18, it does not comply with 10.
It can't be a direct access, right?
So, um, we should at the very least add 10. So are we striking A, or are we adding 10?
Striking A and adding 10, both of them.
What is 10?
10 just, 10 just says you've got to have a direct door.
So 10 is, um, accessory dwelling shall have convenient and direct access to the primary dwelling unit, a connecting inside door, and its own separate entrance exit. So it will not be connected with a door, because it's a separate.
Because it's a separate building.
Yep.
So if we add 10, we strike it.
Yep.
I'd be for that.
Okay, is there any way that this could be misconstrued such that?
Not so much, because it does say you can't really modify the, you can't really change, you know, the, the footprint of the building, and it's only minimum modifications to make it happen. You can't totally revamp a, a, a structure to, to make this happen. It's for, it's for, you know, notching a little, you know, in-law in your garage, above your garage, or in your barn.
Okay.
And it still has to fit everything else for ADAs.
John, are you in favor of deleting A and adding 10?
I, I think so. Sorry, I'm probably a little bit confused, but I think so.
Would you like some more time? I don't.
No, no, I.
Like, I, I just want to feel out the board for where we're at.
Okay.
I think that makes sense to give you the A.
Yeah, and add 10, just, just by definition of the strike.
Okay, so are we okay with everything else on this page relating to changes in the zoning ordinance for ADUs? Do you feel like you have this?
I, I was thinking you were gonna remind it.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that.
Um, just one question that kind of sparked my mind. When we talked about the wording select board and their designee.
Yes.
Should it be designees? Does it always have to be the same person? They, they could.
Well, they can designate, they can designate anybody.
Designate you, and then now you, and now you, because you're on vacation.
Yeah.
But that just becomes a different, they, they can designate a different person, I would say.
At any time, to, 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 during any project, okay.
So, yes, I think that's fine, I don't think any multiples, but that's a good question.
It doesn't mean designees.
Yep.
Okay.
Because the designate can change.
It, it's not a permanent.
Right, it's not.
Recognition, it's not a permanent designation. Right, okay. As long as it's not limited to the same person, designate that person.
Well, not only that, but like, you could designate me to do one job and Caroline to do another.
And in which case you both designees.
Yeah, we're both, yeah.
Designees and their designees.
Could it hurt to put designate?
In parentheses for the S, the S in parentheses, okay.
Just so I can point out to my students that I made that error.
You may bless them yourself.
Kevin really impacted the town, keeping your mark.
Can I get a footnote, it's, uh, HAI, N E S.
Absolutely. Okay. Very good.
The only thing I'm, I'm thinking about, I'm sorry to go back to this.
You're fine.
In terms of detached.
Yep.
So new law really doesn't address detached.
No, it does not.
We don't have to allow them.
So because we don't have to allow them, we do allow them, we don't have to.
So, okay, so why is it that if the new law is to, uh, uh, address them, why do we have to change the minimum to 750 square feet?
We, we're gonna scratch A, so there will be no minimum. It will only reference 12, which will be changed, 12, which says the size shall be, which shall not exceed, that will be changed to 750. And that will apply also to the accessory structure that has an ADU in it.
The ADU. Yeah.
So we're gonna scrap A, because there will be no reference to any minimum.
Okay, so the only possible impact of this change in regard to that is that if we have an existing detached accessory unit that's 500 feet, they could enlarge it.
They can't change the footprint.
You can't change the footprint, that's B. No net increase in building footprint or floor space shall be allowed.
Okay, okay.
Add floor space, yeah.
Okay.
That's kind of the caveat, I think that, yeah, you can't modify the building to, to. Put ADU in there, it has to fit.
Right.
In the building.
In the, within the building.
Okay.
And that ADU still has to meet size of primary, so you can't tuck a really tiny one in there.
Okay.[1720.94]